Hello and welcome to Ward Talk, CTN's look at the political scene in Ann Arbor. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. We'll be discussing issues and solutions with the city council members from our five wards each month. Joining us this month is Chris Watson from Ward Two. Chris Watson, very nice to meet you. This is your first time on our show and you're one of our newbies. So let's just talk about you first.
Well, you might. No, first of all, I wanted to thank you for having me, Bonnie, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk to Ward Two representatives, or to talk to Ward Two community members.
And why are you on the council? Why are you here?
Yeah. I grew up here in Ann Arbor. My parents moved here when I was about two years old, but I think there's two formative events that got me interested in getting involved in the community. One was, in high school, I started working at the Obama campaign office in downtown Ann Arbor, but they told me that they needed somebody to work in Ward Two. So I became the canvas chair for Ward Two, and that meant I was knocking a lot of doors in campaign season 2008. So that got me out and talking to neighbors. And then the second thing that got me involved, that got me interested in making a positive difference in the community, was working for the Green Baxter Court Community Centers Summer Program, where they provide a tutoring and support for the youth there during the summer season at an Ann Arbor Housing Commission affordable housing site.
Was this while you were a teenager?
Yeah, that was like my junior year in high school. But it basically got me thinking that housing can help bring a diverse set of Ann Arborites into our city. And it was also a place where it reminded me that the funding that our community dedicates to housing and that we've increased through the Affordable Housing Village, that helps people get a start in our community, have access to our schools, our parks, and the things that make Ann Arbor great. And also, it reminded me of the racial diversity and the first-generation Ann Arborites who could come in. So, but moving on from there, I went away to college, but I came back and I got a job at the American Mathematical Society, and through that, I do work in data and we make a database of the current mathematical research. So that gives me kind of the experience analyzing a lot of information and then trying to do some problem solving and trying to come to conclusions. And I think that experience combined with the love I have for this community, it helps me as I'm analyzing information in my job today.
So you come with a lot of experience and skills, and you also have an emotional connection to wanting to see the city be the best that it can be, for sure. Yeah. Okay, well, you're from Ward Two, and I know there's some things going on in Ward Two. So let's start with your ward. What's happening?
I think the biggest thing that's happening right now is the Earhart Improvement Project, and that started the last week in July, and it's continuing, the work will actually be continuing until November. But for right now, the road is restricted to northbound traffic, and we're going to be putting in sidewalks that will allow people to access King School and Green Hills from the eastern side of the road. We're putting in roundabouts to allow for easier pedestrian crossings, and we're also repaving a road that is long overdue. The project had been mentioned since 2019.
Now, is this area, an area that has grown substantially with new construction? Is that why all this is happening?
Yes, there's a new housing development on the east side, which is Concord Pines. But also, I just heard from voters when I was on the campaign trail that it's just a known difficult intersection, and we know from traffic data that there's a lot more bikers as there's a connection to the B2B trail, and that left turn coming north on Earhart can be a difficult one. So we want to kind of fix all those things in one go.
Okay. And I know there's some street repair work going on. Where is that?
Yeah, so in addition to the Earhart Project, there's Glacier Way and Huron Parkway have just finished, but they're adding in on Glacier a pedestrian island, so the work on that is starting today.
And that's a very busy road.
Right, it is. It is. And then the other piece of pedestrian infrastructure that's going in, that is an asphalt path on Huron Parkway, and that goes by the golf course. And actually, work on that is expected to be complete, I think, by the end of next week. And that's just allowing people to walk from the golf course down to Washington.
Okay. And anything else?
You know, one project that's a little bit further out, it hasn't started yet, it's projected to start in October, but it's close to my heart growing up in Ward Two. I know we all love Gallup Park, it's Ann Arbor's biggest park. And they are replacing the wooden bridge there, and I've gotten to see some of the designs in Parks Advisory Commission, and it's really going to maintain a lot of the spirit, the wooden elements that people like, but making it modern and making it a safer bridge. So we're actually using federal funding for that, and that project is slated to start in October and go through the winter.
Yeah, so that hasn't even started yet, but it's on the way.
That's what I'd like people to know.
Great. And I know you're, you work on some commissions, so I just want to give you a chance to mention any information about the particular entities that you are involved in, is either, you know, representing the council or being advisors. I know there's some money that's being allocated, I think it's federal funding, that a decision has to be made on how to use that funding. So what's that all about?
Yes, so they're called the Home ARP Funds, and these are funds dedicated to both alleviating and fighting homelessness, but also creating permanent supportive housing. And those funds have to be spent, I think, by 2027. And the county has presented a plan to allocate the majority of those funds now to eviction prevention and to rapid rehousing, but our community has also made a commitment to building long-term housing and permanent supportive housing, permanent affordable housing development. So the county has been working on this and hearing from the community, and as a representative on the urban county board, I've been bringing Ann Arbor's concerns to that board, and we'll be eventually voting on that pretty soon. And the biggest portion that we hope to see more of is permanent supportive housing money, because that supports the housing projects that are happening within the city.
And it can happen sooner than later.
Right, right.
Yeah, we're always talking about that. Okay, let's move on to the whole city. We've had some new things happening and some things continuing. I'd like to start with the concerns that the public has about the storms we've had and the loss of electricity, and I think there's some confusion as to what's the responsibility of the city and the DTE. And I know there's a lot of frustration being discussed, but there's only so much the city can do. So I'd like to just kind of clear that up. First of all, I know DTE is responsible for the tree trimming, at least the upper parts of the trees, I know. Wherever there are wires, they're responsible for clearing the branches that could be hanging and touching or downing wires.
Right.
Yes. And I know after the storm, there was a lot of tree trimming being done as well. And I know there was a resolution to study outage effects in the drinking water system. So that's something the city can do, is just get information as to how it has impacted citizens, as well as getting information about, you know, what the losses that individual families have. And is that a study going on right now?
So, right, as a result of that, as a result of that resolution, we want to gather information about the cost to the city. So what did it cost when our pumping station was out of power? And then what was the cost to residents? And this is information that we will be using as we talk to the Michigan Public Services Commission, the state commission that regulates the utility. And I also wanted to mention, yes, you talked about the city's responsibility for the, or what parts of it are DTE's responsibility versus cities. And DTE looks after that poles and wires infrastructure. To fix certain situations, the city has to be in contact with DTE. And one of the most important things I think that we've seen recently is the Ann Arbor Fire Chief testifying before the Michigan Public Services Commission and talking about how at certain points, DTE is unresponsive. And we've seen that also, not just around storms, but also in my ward, we see that around certain street lighting. We need to get in contact with DTE if there is a street light out, and we need to get in contact quickly to, you know, protect pedestrian safety. So those are those areas where there are handoffs between the city and the DTE, and we have to make sure that those are happening in a timely manner. And when they don't, to understand the impacts and to hold DT to account.
Right. And I know the city has developed this program called Having Resilience Hubs in Different Neighborhoods. This is a new expression I just found out about. So what's the purpose of it and how is it developed? Is there going to be movement on having more of these?
Yes, I'm glad, I'm glad to get a chance to answer these questions. So I think it's best, I think, to start out with a definition of resilience hubs. And so these are community centers that we can ensure will not lose power during a power event. So they have solar panels, they have battery backups. We know that residents can come there to use refriger, like coolers and refrigeration that they'll have there.
Are you talking about buildings that are already in place, like churches?
Yes. So there's two so far. So we have two that are so far, and they're both community centers in low-income communities here in Ann Arbor. So one is in Ward One, in the North Side Community Center, and the other one is in the Mitchell Bryant area, the Mitchell Bryant Community Center.
So there are two right now.
There are two right now. And, right, so the goal is that in case of emergency, you can go there to charge up your devices, you can go there to store your food and perishable items, and also that there'll be distribution centers also for supplies in case those become necessary. But also, you can just generally be sure that you'll be safe there because of the way those buildings have been weatherized.
Will they have food available?
It is a distribution point for Community Action Network and other food bank sites. So, yeah. And so, oh, and you asked, the final question you asked was where, when can we see more of them? And I'm actually excited to announce that the next one will be at Green Baxter Court, the place I mentioned volunteering. That is the next Community Action Network site that will be, the community center there will be the next one to be made a resilience hub. So more in the works, but that is the next one.
Okay, and the minute we have left before the break, do you know anything about whether, why we don't have lines buried already, or why we, everything is exterior? Was there a reason it wasn't done before?
So, as I said, you know, the maintenance and the upkeep and the improvement of infrastructure is the sole responsibility of DTE, and we do know that they told their shareholders that they were saving money by deferring maintenance. And there's actually been a recent study that said like two weather events a year is enough to make it worth it to underground infrastructure.
Yeah, and we've already, we've already gone there.
Right, no, exactly, we've gone over it, we've gone over it. But DTE makes that choice as a privately-run public utility, and so they haven't seen fit to make that choice yet. But, you know, I think the numbers and the results are clear that we need to be considering, you know, DTE specifically, the city has no, you know, influence over their shareholder-driven board, you know. We have no influence over that, but I think the math is clear that buried infrastructure would be good for our community.
Yeah, okay, so this is going to be a topic we'll probably be discussing for a while. But I think it's important that we understand, you know, what the city can do and what DTE has to do. Okay, and when we get back, we've got quite a few other really important topics. Okay. We want to hear from you, so please email questions to ctn@atugov.org or tweet us at hashtag CTNAnnArbor. We're taking a break now, and we'll be coming back with more from Ward Talk.
We want everyone in Ann Arbor to be safe, which is why Ann Arbor has a law requiring drivers to be five feet while passing bicyclists, pedestrians, or wheelchairs traveling on the road. Most traffic lanes within the city are at least 10 feet wide, so we have half a lane width of space for safety's sake. This is a good way to measure how much space is required. And if it isn't safe to pass, don't. Be cautious, be patient, and most of all, be safe.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz, and this is Ward Talk. I'm visiting now with Chris Watson from Ward Two, and we've had some lengthy discussions this first part. We've got more to go with talking about the whole city of Ann Arbor, Chris. Just in the last week, we've had some interesting discussion at the council meeting, and the issue of safety in terms of transportation and pedestrians and cyclists, having a safe way to travel, that was a big topic, because there was an incident in which one driver who was being as careful as he could be still ended up hitting a cyclist who thankfully wasn't badly hurt, but the issue seemed to be that the markings could be better improved so that cyclists could see when cars are turning. So let's just talk a little bit about that, because I know there's been a lot of involvement in improving the streets, making the streets more bike accessible, and also trying to eliminate accidents. And I just want to say that in the three areas where there was great improvement, there's a 41% reduction in severe crashes for both walkers and bikers, and that's pretty significant. So it shows that this work that's being done is showing that it was worth it. So what was the issue with this particular driver who was requesting more, you know, more change?
As far as I could tell, as far as I could tell, it was about the visibility and I think the differentiation between the color of the paint and the curb. And with everything green, it was just sort of hard to, I believe, see where the bicyclist was coming, as he said he checked his mirrors, and then immediately kind of the biker was right behind him. And I want to thank that community member for coming and bringing that information to us and building a diagram. The other piece that I'd like to talk about is Raymond Hess, our Transportation Manager, has done a really, really good job of collecting this crash data and also using innovative sources like Strava, which is like the biking and walking exercise tracker, but that gives a heat map to show exactly where people are biking and walking, and then combining that with where we're seeing accident reports. We know both, you know, how often people are using certain areas and then where the problem areas are.
So there's a lot of data analysis.
There's a lot of data, and there's a quick response. So we know that the city's been able to use bollards, quick removable bollards that can be attached, that are making, protecting those bike lanes by, you know, preventing vehicles from jumping simple paint markings. So we've seen that deployed quickly, and so I'm hopeful that this issue can be resolved. And as it's presented to, as it's presented to traffic staff, they've just been very responsive and using the data quickly.
Right, okay. So we'll be looking forward to seeing if, you know, what, what results will suggest some slight changes, improvements. Great. Now, the other big discussion at the meeting, the last meeting, was that people who are renters in the city came to speak to the council, really upset and complaining that the conditions, the conditions of the apartments and the pricing of rentals has gone sky-high much more than usual, and their hands are tied, and it's becoming quite a problem, especially for people who are on a budget, which most of us are on. But there's also only certain things Ann Arbor can do as a city. So I'd like to delineate, you know, what the city can do, and again, what the state has control over, but how the city can get involved with communicating with the state about making changes. So, it's all yours.
Well, you know, no, it does all start with those community members who showed some incredible bravery and came in numbers to our meeting and really talked about some deeply personal issues. And I think the first part of the city's response was, as soon as people were talking about the conditions they were living in, the black mold, the different, someone even seemed to mention mice and infestation. That information was passed along to the head of our community service area, and we expect to see some inspections, building inspections there, rental unit inspections. The other piece about rent control, that was a big ask, that is currently illegal in the state of Michigan. I do know that specifically, the state rep for Ward Two, Jason Morgan, has been interested in improving things for renters because he's a renter himself, and I, you know, I believe that, you know, rent control is under discussion, along with, there's other pieces here, which are, the difficulty in getting an apartment can come from source of income discrimination, which is if you want to use a housing voucher, places might try to find a way to deny you. Of course, that's illegal federally, but sometimes places will play a few games or try to say, hey, you're paying with a voucher, you got to show you have X amount of income. But the point of it is, the voucher is your income, that's what the state is providing you to live. And so a couple bills are planned to come up, I believe in October, potentially earlier, at the State House, and those are sponsored by Conlon, Jason Morgan, and by Representative Wilson of Ypsilanti. So that's a strong cohort. And they're actually holding a housing town hall, August 17th, in Ypsilanti at the Freight House. I believe that's in the evening. So that's one area where we know our state reps are listening. The other portion that people mentioned was just the price of housing. I know for a fact, I looked through Ward Two, outside of some short-term, like three-month summer rentals from students, outside of that, it was almost impossible to get a rental unit for under, a one-bedroom for under $1,600 a month. So this is, this is a problem that has to be attacked in a variety of ways.
Right.
And we know that people are having to move further and further out, even to be able to use a tenant-based voucher, and the city's been trying to address that.
Yeah. I understand that there are some programs in place in order to help renters. There's an eviction prevention program and a rent assistance program. However, it seems that there are more people in need of that assistance than what can be done to help.
Yes, we know that need is severe, to the extent that when the council in May passed a resolution dedicating $300,000 to eviction prevention, that money was spent almost in a month. We helped 182 people and paid off 91% of them, we were able to pay off all their past due rent, but it just went very, very quickly.
So is that, is that funding totally gone now?
So that, the $300,000 that was allocated in the beginning was done, but we did allocate another $250,000 during the budget cycle, so that started to be spent in July. And I'm not sure, but that might, that money might have already been spent as well. So we know that the need is great. But the other portion we know is that people have been willing to participate and serve on our Renters Commission, and the Renters Commission is looking into some of the other barriers that are happening, including people getting charged to be on wait lists, and then that money being not refunded from them, and looking into more enforcement of our early leasing ordinance, which can kind of be an effective eviction if you're living in a place and the landlord says, oh, I've actually signed up a new tenant, you have to be out by X amount of time. So we, the city has passed that ordinance, and we're just trying to strengthen that through our Renters Commission.
Okay, so I can see the Renters Commission that was, you know, somewhat new of all the commissions, that they're really addressing the problem and assisting the city.
Yes.
In moving forward.
And I do want to mention, you know, my colleagues, Travis Redina and Cynthia Harrison have taken a big leadership as liaisons to that commission, and Travis was actually a founding member of the commission, so, and also to Chair Farah, he's been very good as well. So it's, I'm just excited for the work they do, and I know it's, there's just bottomless need, and it never comes fast enough. But we feel that here too, at City Council.
Okay, and some, some new news, good news. We have some funding for public art projects, and I don't know where the funding comes from, is this federal?
I'm not 100% sure, but I think this is part of some of the ARPA funds, which were dedicated toward public art.
Yeah, and they're looking at new roundabouts that are planned up to 2029. So this is a long-term project of having more roundabouts, but also possibly putting in 3D art in areas that are already landscaped, it could be having to do with these intersections, basically looking to beautify the city. And plus, this is something new, having portable toilets in the city in some neighboring areas to just make it more convenient for people, especially in the city downtown when they're shopping. And I believe the city is starting a one-year pilot program.
It's a pilot program through a group called Throne, and so these toilets will be cleaning. They'll be accessed through an app, but there will also be another way to access that for people who don't have cell phones or, I believe, like a car.
Right, and they're going to be ADA, accessible and compliant. So that's just something I'm mentioning to, yeah. Okay, and before we end, I just want to mention that you do have a program in your ward in which the police presence is going to come and educate your community.
Right, yeah.
So just, just give a little blurb for that.
Right, so we're going to have a community engagement session. It's sort of tied to the back to school, and it's going to be at Glacier Highlands Park, Larchmont, we call it Larchmont Park growing up, but it'll be September 13th at about 5:00 PM. It coincides with our regular neighborhood food truck night, and the chief and the engagement team will be there to talk to neighbors about, you know, how to avoid crimes of opportunity, the people rifling through your cars, and also how to get just general safety advice as we go into the school year.
And people can look online for more information.
Yes, they can look online, that's going to be coming from the police community engagement.
Well, it's been a pleasure. We're out of time, time always goes too quickly. So thank you for joining us and enlightening us on these topics.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Remember to join us for a new episode every month. We want to hear from you, so please email us at ctn@atugov.org. Attention, Ward Talk. You can also follow CTN and ask questions on Twitter at twitter.com/CTNAnnArbor. We'll make sure to include your questions. To watch this and all of the other CTN's program, head online to youtube.com/CTNAnnArbor. For Ward Talk, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz. Until next month.